Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of West Covina City Council Meeting, Tuesday, April 16, 2013. I'm going to ask, as we rise this evening, and I will be calling our Rabbi Diaz forward from the temple. Ameis shalom. But prior to that, if everybody would please stand with me. I would like to take this opportunity to have a moment of silence on behalf of the issue that has taken place in Boston. I know many of you have heard. And my prayers and my thoughts go out to the families and to those and reasons of why these types of things go on. I just want to pray to those that are angry and hurting and frustrating. And our responsibility as humankind to be kind to each other and loving and caring, and please bring peace to our world. And with that, I'd like to take a moment of brief silence. Thank you all very much for joining me. I'd like to call forward Rabbi Diaz with temple. Ameis shalom, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Robert Satello. Thank you so much for being here this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Shelley Sanderson and West Covina City Council members. Thank you for inviting me to assist you in opening your meeting with invocation this evening. I would like to preface my prayer this evening with a two-minute introduction. Our city has endured some very troubling struggles recently with what seems to be an epidemic of crime, mental illness, and economic challenges. While this is not foreign in many places globally, it still is quite a weight of responsibility to be appointed as leaders in this era of irrational behavior. The tragedies our country has endured and the very recent senseless explosions and shedding of innocent blood makes it plain to see that what we need is for government leadership and constituency to become a team. The ancient rabbis believed that the proper way to lead was to first become a role model for the people, that they would have someone to emulate, and that the proper way for us as spiritual leaders to pray for our government leaders, as yourself, was that God would bless you with a successful term of office and that you would be able to uphold justice, to protect the people and create a good economy. It is with this in mind that I humbly ask you to bow your heads. To he who grants wisdom to kings and dominion to rulers, to he whose kingdom is a kingdom spanning all eternities, to he who has the power to protect and to provide, to he who can make a path in the middle of the sea, I invoke you. Bless our mayor, our city council members, and those they love. To you, the king who reigns over kings, in your mercy may you sustain them and protect them from every trouble, woe, and injury. May you rescue them and put into their heart and into the heart of all their councilors compassion to do good with us and with all of West Covina. May they become our role models, and may we learn to emulate their integrity and their good character. May the people under their jurisdiction prosper and live in safety and provision, and may their term be pleasing to use they fulfill their destiny. As I close, I ask for this meeting to be productive and in keeping with your principles and through it all, that they would keep in mind that you were God. And we all say amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please. Mayor Sanderson, here. Mayor Pro Tem Hurford.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Satello.
Here.
Councilmember Sykes.
Here.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, reporting out from closed session, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council, the record should reflect that the City Council, all five members present convened for the special meeting this evening, that prior to recessing into closed session, the four items that were listed on the agenda were announced for discussion in closed session. There was one speaker to the council before recessing into closed session. The following is my report. Concerning the Conference of Legal Counsel existing litigation matters, the first one being Flannery versus City of West Covina, the City Council received a briefing. On that matter, there was no final action taken. Authority and direction was provided to the City Attorney's Office, but since there was no final settlement, there is nothing to report at this time. On the West Covina Improvement Association versus City of West Covina matter, the City Council received a briefing from a special counsel concerning this matter of appeal, but there was no final action taken and nothing to report publicly at this time. The City of Alhambra and 46 other cities, of which one is the City of West Covina versus the County of Los Angeles, the City Council did authorize continuing further prosecution of this litigation against the County of Los Angeles, but there was no final action taken, and there is nothing to be reported. On the Conference of Legal Counsel anticipated litigation, there was one case discussed. The City Council did unanimously provide authority to the City Attorney's Office to file litigation against the State of California, the State Department of Finance, the County of Los Angeles, and any and all other related parties in the event that the Department of Finance denies the request of the city pursuant to the meet and confer process and the attempt by the city to protect the money that is being denied by the state from the city. That is my report from closed session. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting at this time.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, any changes to our agenda this evening?
Yes, there is one change to the agenda, and item 20, the emergency ordinance will be taken off the agenda tonight. And with respect to item 18, the summer place appeal, I just want to let the public know that there's been a request for a 60-day continuance, in case there's anybody in the audience that's looking here to speak on that matter.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll come forward, and we have a couple presentations that I will begin. Again, thank you all for being here this evening. We have two very, very important presentations tonight. We like to think of West Covina as a beautiful city. I love it. That's why we live here. And so with that, our first person that I would like to call forward is Mr. Shannon Yahtzee with our Public Works Director. He will be receiving the proclamation designating Saturday, April 20, as Earth Day. Shannon, welcome, and thank you for coming tonight. I'm going to let you take the microphone and let everybody know what our Earth Day is all about.
Hey, thank you, and I just wanted to let you all know some highlights of some of the things we're doing. We've got an entire month of activities. And we're starting off with this Saturday with Earth Day and Arbor Day celebration at Galstra Park. It's a great place to visit. If you haven't been there, there's trails. It's, you know, you're in the middle of the city, but you're in the middle of the nature. So please go there. There's lots of events for family and kids there, and a lot of things to encourage recycling and reuse and smart use of materials. And then after that, we're going to be having electronic waste roundup at the City Yard the same day. And then in the next month, we have coming up a gardening workshop, free mulch for city residents, a garden walk, household hazardous waste roundup. And then four weeks that we have every year, our cleanup Saturdays, where we encourage people to get things out there on the curb. All these things are rent-funded, and flyers at the front desk have all the dates on these, all these events. Please pick one up. The information is also on our city website or our Public Works environment.
Thank you, Shannon. And with that, our Earth Day proclamation. And I want to say, this is the gentleman that makes West Covina look so beautiful. He does such a great job. So Shannon, thank you so much. And with that, the proclamation of April 20, 2013. Our next proclamation is for Arbor Day, which I'd like to call forward Geneva Nixon with West Covina Beautiful, who will be receiving the proclamation designating April 20, 2000 as Arbor Day in West Covina. If you'd like to come forward, Geneva, and let everyone know about what you have planned.
Well, I'm sure that most of you will be attending and joining the Earth Day activities. Arbor Day is combined with Earth Day. So enjoy Earthway, Earth Day, but at 11 o'clock, come over to the area where the tree planting will be held in the Arbor Day observance. This year, we are planting a tree in honor of Beaurey. She's a well-known, she was a well-known person here. I hope you all attend. It was a fun, nice day.
Thank you so much. And I know we have a reader board up there for all the residents to know what different types of events that we have going on. So with that, I'd like to present you with this proclamation, April 20, 2013, Arbor Day. And thank you so much for doing this time and time again. It means so much to me. We have a beautiful community because of residents and people that are involved like you. So thank you so very much. It means a lot to us. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I would like to give my thanks to Barbara Bryley, who does so much work to help me put this event together. Barbara and her staff are wonderful.
Next this evening on our agenda, we have our oral communications, and we have yellow speaker cards that are at the top of the stairs. If you'd like to speak on agendized and non-agendized items, we will do our very best to address your concerns. And as always, I'd like to let everyone know that if they have any concerns, complaints, issues that they need handled, to please call the City Manager's Office at 626-939-8401. And I'd be more than glad to meet with you, as well as City Manager. We have a fantastic staff that we just need to hear from you in any way that we can help you. So with that, I'll begin our oral communications with Mr. Alfred Williams.
Mayor Pro Tem Hurford, Mr. McIntyre, Mr. Satello, Mr. Sykes. Tonight, I know Mr. Hurford would wish that a lot of things would go away, especially the reverse racism comment that he made. And I have waited and waited and waited to hear an apology from him and to hear his council's comments on this, and I have heard none. Martin Luther King once said that "It's not what my enemies or friends say or do to me, it's the silence of my friends." Well, I'm going to change that and say, it's not what Mr. Hurford said, but it is the silence of this council that has bothered me the most. You have not said a word. Okay? I grew up under segregation. I know what it's like, and I know what reverse racism does. My son was accused of getting into Berkeley because of meeting some quota. Okay? My grandson came up to me one day and said, "Grandpa, that's not really a black center, is there?" He also came up to me one day at a football game that he was playing, and he said, "Grandpa, those kids are calling me a nigger." Okay? Now, how do you respond to that? Each one of you up there, except for Mr. Sykes, will never have to answer this question. You will never in your lifetime have to answer this question. Okay? So don't tell me about racism doesn't exist, and I'm not a racist. We all at some point are a little racist, okay? Even myself, and I don't exclude myself. You know, but Mrs. Sanderson, she is always up there talking about her kids. And I'm saying to you, Mrs. Sanderson, is this what you teach your kids? Is that when somebody makes a statement that you know is morally and ethically wrong, you do nothing? Is that what you want them to learn? If it's your friend, say nothing and let it go? That's what you want? Then those questions I just said, or those comments I just said, when you actually have to answer those questions from your grandkids, let me know. Or maybe, I should say, maybe you don't respond because, is it the fact that Mr. Sykes is a dumb blonde? I'm just asking for clarification. Okay? Mr. Satello, you have never come up with your own opinion. You have never made an opinion that was yours. You said, "I was waiting for him to come back to make my comment." People didn't ask you to wait till he had come back. They asked you what your opinion was, and you had none. But maybe, is it the fact that Mr. Sykes is a dumb plumber and he has no opinion? I'm asking for clarification. Okay? Mr. McIntyre, I haven't heard any comment from you, but maybe it's the fact that maybe Mr. Sykes is some shady developer. And why should I come here? The guy that put me on the council, I have a duty to him. Maybe. But this is, again, just for clarification. Okay? So I say tonight that these opinions that you people have put out there and said, "I'm not a racist," is a bunch of crap. I have seen my father in the South go to friends that he called white and friend and was asked to come to the back door. This was humiliating. This is something I remember as a kid because it was humiliating to me. This is something you, you, and you will never experience. You will never experience it. But again, I'm up here just looking for clarification on why Mr. Hurford made this racist comment. You know, President Obama just recently had to make an apology because he said, and I don't remember the quote, that the California Attorney General was the best-looking Attorney General he's seen in 50 states. Now, the feminists went off the chain. They're saying, "Oh, you're degrading an Attorney General for making a statement." And maybe he was. And I don't think he did it on purpose, but he apologized. So why can't you, Mr. Hurford?
Madam Mayor, Speaker's seat, the five minutes.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. John Schumaker.
Good evening. During the last council meeting in the Tribune, Steve Hurford made statements that probably raised more issues than it answered. Hurford stated that he missed a meeting in February because he retired from work and went on vacation. Was this a special meeting called after he made his vacation plans? Was the meeting on a new night, a change that was made after he made his vacation plans? No, it was a regularly scheduled council meeting. I agree with the Steve Hurford that he was not ducking the controversy of his questionable remarks. It was just Hurford not showing any concern about his elected duties. After all, the meeting he missed was only scheduled about 50 years ago. How could we expect a 22-year member of the council to know the nights of council meetings when he made his vacation plans? Maybe he made those vacation plans before the schedule came out about 50 years ago of when we have our council meetings. Hurford cries that the council cannot do the job that people elect him to do because of the controversy. Well, that explains why Steve has failed our city for the last 10 years. He can't work when there's controversy. This council, especially Steve Hurford, continued to fail our city, canceling the last council meeting because there was no business, nothing to do. May I assume our police department is fully staffed at 127 officers, not 87. May I assume that we don't have any firefighters who are on the verge of losing their jobs because a grant is running out? Is new fire equipment on order? We have a budget surplus now? Are hundreds of millions of dollars in debt is paid off? The city is transferring funds from the police forfeiture account to pay for overtime and other non-budget expenses, but there is nothing for the council to work on. Actually, there is nothing this council can work on. Electability does not equate ability. Hurford, during a statement, said he consulted an attorney about his comments. Now, why would you consult a civil rights attorney if you did nothing wrong? By the way, did Mr. Hurford pay for this consultation, or did the city? Who was this attorney? Many years ago, I met an attorney who was defending a person I cannot believe anyone would defend. While discussing the case one day with him in his office, he told me to remember the following: "John, there are three types of guilt in life: moral guilt, factual guilt, and legal guilt." He then stated you could be guilty morally, you could be guilty factually, and as innocent as a newborn baby legally. So when Hurford says he has a legal opinion clearing them, does not carry much weight when you understand what I just stated. This man did not mention one other type of guilt: political guilt. Now, Hurford may not be guilty morally, legally, or in fact, but he sure did make an unbelievably dumb statement and is politically guilty. Our city attorney weighed in, saying that Hurford has a right to make those comments, and the council cannot infringe upon his ability to make those statements. I'll not argue over his legal opinion, since I do not have a bar card. I cannot lie for a living. The council, though, can't take any action to prevent Hurford from inserting his foot into his mouth, but this council can vote to say they do not agree with a member of the council making racist comments. Now for the final issue. After Steve Hurford made his boneheaded statement, the public started saying Hurford is a racist. I must state, and I do believe that he did not make a racist statement, stupid yes, ignorant yes, racist no. Having said that, though, I think the real question we should all be asking is why did Mr. Hurford accuse Mr. Sykes of being a racist? Remember, Hurford asked the question, was Sykes against McIntyre because McIntyre is white? Now, this whole controversy, this whole issue would be gone by now if King Hurford had simply said, "I may have said something that came out about as bad as possible, but His Majesty cannot admit fault. Pope Steve thinks he's infallible." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Bruce Leinbach.
Yeah, City Council, like I say, we've got to give our thoughts and prayers to the people of Boston, whether it's a terrorist attack, a public event, a marathon. And one thing is great about our country, the way the country has rallied around this terrorist attack, instead of dividing us, has brought us together. So even when things happen, we come together as a country. That's one positive thing. I saw the movie recently, 42. It was a real good movie. I enjoyed it. And it's amazing about the racism about the South, particularly Jackie Robinson, who was black, counter-racism in the L.A. area, UCLA, where he graduated from. And we went to the South, he had this extreme amount of racism, and he was said by Branch Rikney, "You're paid to turn your head. You're not to get involved in racial controversies." And goes about how all these insults he endured, and he always turned his head. And just think, what would have happened if he were to react back in the same way? Because of this, he helped bridge our integrating African-American players into our baseball system. Now, Mr. Hurford made a comment recently, a lot of people construed as racist. And I really do feel this, that all people here or whatever, they have made comments that are racist, including me. But the thing that bothers me the most is it's been made, but there's been no retraction. It's loud to boil, and instead of united the city, it's divided the city. Instead of like, you got this fire, you didn't mean to create controversy, and you got this fire that has come out of controversy, and like, instead of pouring water on the fire, poured gasoline. A lot of people got offended that you were going to sue them for slander, or think about, I don't know, you're saying you mean slandered, and you're bringing a civil rights attorney involved, and almost like you're threatening them. So a lot of people, I don't know, were affronted by the whole thing. And I'll basically, Mr. Hurford, deep down, I don't think you're racist. But I do feel, to put out the fire, you should make an apology to the people, say, "I'm sorry." Everybody makes a mistake. I just feel that when you do this, this would help the situation, to say, "I'm sorry." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Blanca Viner.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson and Councilmembers. Mr. Hurford, I wanted to address you in particular about your comment about Mr. Sykes. I'm sure you know the fact that he's married to a Caucasian woman, so it'd be pretty ridiculous to be prejudiced or a racist. But more than anything to me that's most offensive is the fact that, you know, you hold a position, and you're, when you're up here, you should set the example, the bar just a little higher, and you see that your constituents are really upset, and yet you don't have the courtesy, or the dignity, or the integrity to say, "Look, if I said something that may have offended you, I apologize as your councilman." Can you tell me why you can't do that? I'll be waiting for an answer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Corey Warshaw.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm here to talk about, there's been talk of a possible appeal of the court decision against building the project here on city and county lands. I wanted to let you know, and the city know, I am not in favor of the city appealing it. There's no sense in pouring more bad money after bad money in a bad project. This area has always been used by the city and the county for public use. Why do we want to sell it for medical? There's been the talk, or for an office building, private use. There's been talk it'll bring a lot of money into the city. It brings very little. Wouldn't pay for a new fire engine, wouldn't pay for another officer in our schools. In fact, it loses money because it takes away parking, which we now charge money for. It'll make it harder for people to park. We know how crowded this gets with the courts when we have different events here in the city, and we would lose that parking. I really want to know why this was brought to the city and approved by the city when we never had the county's approval. Why would we spend that money without ever getting county's approval? I'd like to know who in the city didn't tell this council that we never had county's approval? The thousands of dollars we've wasted, there's no sense in throwing more bad money after that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Forrest Wilkins.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council. I am Forrest Wilkins. My wife and I have lived in West Covina for over 40 years. I am here tonight to try and help improve the image of the mayor and three city council members in reference to what the news media has reported on. Now, Councilman Hurford, a good public relations tool is to be positive and not defensive. The recent city council meeting, you stated you checked with a lawyer about your remarks on February 5, and you reported that the lawyer told you you made no racist remarks. Interesting. First of all, do you know that there are over 175,000 lawyers here in California? Anyone can find a lawyer what you want them to say, with over 175,000 lawyers to choose from, especially when... thousand lawyers to choose from, especially when the lawyer was not present at that city council meeting. Second of all, how do you explain the fifteen or so citizens that gasped after you, you're uncalled for question, and then they exited the room? The citizens who witnessed your uncalled-for question are better evaluators than a lawyer who was not even in the council chambers. Third, it's not clear that you apologized to Councilman Sykes. And to clear the air, you can ask Councilman Sykes, here in person, if he ever heard you personally apologize, or you can just apologize here tonight in this public forum. What about the citizens of West Covina? I have not heard of any apology to the citizens of West Covina. You can do that this evening and try to put your inappropriate question behind you. Now, Mayor Sanderson, in reference to that council meeting, you recognized you were losing control of that city council meeting when you heard the gasp and citizens began to walk out. You immediately called for a five-minute recess. You defused the situation quickly. However, when you restarted the council meeting, no comment about the comment Councilman Hereford made. Councilman Satello, it's amazing to me, with your vast experience in life, United States veteran, a supervisor in public in the plumbing trade, a big supporter of youth support sports programs, and you have yet to even say that Councilman Hereford's question was one that you would not have asked, but you are silent, indicating you agree with his inappropriate question. Councilman McIntyre, I recognize you are young and you are new to this council, and I can only imagine, your first night as a councilman, you probably were in shock, given you the benefit of the doubt, but continued silence? So we have no public apology from Councilman Hereford, and silence from Councilman Satello and McIntyre, and silence from Mayor Sanderson. Councilman Hereford states he talked with a lawyer. Remember, there are over one hundred and seventy-five thousand lawyers in California. Citizens of West Covina do not need to seek a lawyer's opinion. We have a tape, and we know about common decency.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, council, my name is Beverly Bothis, and I am here to support Geneva's invitation to our Arbor Day celebration. As president of West Covina Beautiful, I'd like to invite everyone, the council, staff, and everybody out here to Earth Day and to our Arbor Day program, and the tree planting this Saturday at Gallister Park, 11:00 a.m. Earth Day starts at nine, but the tree planting will be back in the area where the play equipment is at 11 o'clock. The tree is planted in recognition of B. Araby, who worked very hard in the past to bring a special quality to our city. West Covina Beautiful and the city have worked together and brought this tree recognition here. For thirty-one years, we've received the Tree City flag. We'll be serving birthday cake in recognition of West Covina's 90th birthday. It is also West Covina Beautiful's wish to donate a 90th birthday tree to the city. We would have liked to have planted at the tree this spring, but the calendar was full, and we understand it's on the schedule for the fall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Ray Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson and council members. Reason I'm here tonight is to ask the council for an update on the video equipment installation and the, I guess, online status, and that's about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Council members, first, to Mayor Sanderson, for the record, how do you stand on this appeal? Are you for it or against it? Next, why is the majority of this council so determined to change the zoning of our civic center? What else do you want to build on it and destroy our civic center? Next, what I would like to know is how much it has cost the taxpayers of West Covina so far to fight the lawsuit against the West Covina Improvement Association? You know, I would like to have this answer in writing on city letterhead. And next, how much is it going to cost the taxpayers of West Covina to appeal the decision the city lost in court against the West Covina Improvement Association? Now that the majority of this council has decided to throw thousands and thousands of our tax dollars away on an appeal that the city must likely will lose, I would like an answer, and this I would like to have in writing. This is to the residents of West Covina. We have a majority of council members, not including Councilmember Sykes, who feels that their interests outweigh the best interests of the residents of West Covina. Councilmember Sykes decided that throwing thousands and thousands of tax dollars away on not just one law firm, but now there are two law firms fighting this appeal. It wasn't in the best interest of the taxpayers of West Covina. I know Councilmember Sykes feels that way, that throwing thousands and thousands of our tax dollars away on this appeal is a very bad decision by the majority of this council. When we have laid off so many city employees, we have heard how bad our fire trucks are, we have lost so many police officers to protect our residents, but the majority of this council doesn't believe those are very important issues. They have to prove that no one can tell them they are wrong for selling part of our civic center to a developer. Our city is having financial problems like all other cities, but what does the majority of this council do? They decide that all the other problems I just spoke about takes a backseat to this appeal of the lawsuit they lost, and it's going to cost the taxpayers of West Covina thousands and thousands of hard-earned tax dollars, just to try and show one important group of residents that the majority of this council from South Hills will do what they feel is in their own best interest. The majority of this council can deny everything I just said, but that just proves they are in denial and don't have a clue what's best for our city. So, the question is, what do we do about it? First, come November 2013, we replace council members who are up for election, and we place them with council members who care more about the residents of West Covina than their own personal gains. Next, we'll replace our city attorney with one who feels that the best interests of our city comes before theirs. It's time that the residents of this great city say enough is enough, and we're not going to stand for this anymore, and that the needs of the residents outweigh the needs of the majority of the council. And last, I told Councilmember McIntyre when he came on this council that him and I will be probably disagreeing on some issues. Well, here's one. The way Councilmember McIntyre voted on this issue proves having a developer on our city council is a very bad idea. It proves that developers will always choose their own interests over what is best for our city.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Herb Redholtz.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Good evening to you and council and staff and the fine folks here tonight. I too am up here speaking on the council majority's decision to appeal the judge's ruling. This concerns me quite a bit. We've already spent thousands and thousands of taxpayer dollars to fight this battle. These are taxpayers' dollars that the taxpayers of the city don't want to spend. They don't want this project. You're spending their money to appeal and fight for a project that they don't want. There really is, there is no groundswell of support in this community that I can see for this project. No one is coming forward saying, "Yes, yes, I want this, fight for it," no one. But your residents are coming forward to you, meeting after meeting, saying, "We don't want it, don't spend our money on it." There also really is no pressing need for another office building, medical, professional, or whatever, in the city. If you drive around, you can see hundreds of vacancy signs going vacant, going begging for tenants all over the city. We don't need to add to that vacant inventory. It also is a concern, as someone brought up to me earlier, brought up to the council earlier, that we, from what I understand, this cannot go forward without a partnership, an agreement with the county to make it happen. And from what I've read and heard, our supervisor, Molina, is not on board with this. So I don't know how far it's going to go if we don't have that agreement with the county in place. This is a concern. We have, like every other city, the county, the state, we've got budget problems, and we have issues to deal with. We have public safety staffing that needs to be dealt with, and we're going to throw hundreds of thousands of dollars at this. The only people that are going to come out ahead here are the attorneys on all sides who are going to reap a bonanza here at the cost and expense of the West Covina taxpayer. The other thing I have a concern about is, is this city getting involved in another protracted legal entanglement. And the interesting thing is, we have been in one of those for years and years with Mr. Alhassen. And Mr. Alhassen has made a living of going to court and losing and filing appeals, and going to court and losing and filing appeals. He's done this for years. Now it looks like the shoe is on the other foot, and the city of West Covina is going to do that. We're now going to go to court, we're going to lose, we're going to appeal, we're going to lose, we're going to appeal. Problem is, he's spending his own money, or some Emirates money, I don't know whose, but you're spending our money. And this is not good, folks. This is not what we elected you to do. The question is, are you representing us, or are you representing someone else's interests? You're elected to represent us, and it'd be nice if you did that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angie Gillingham.
Hello. I would like to respond to the article in San Gabriel Tribune on the April 2nd where Councilman Hereford stated he is being slandered from his comments made on February 5th council meeting. Let me begin with the definition of slander: the utterance of spreading a false statement or statements harmful to another's character or reputation. No one has slandered Mr. Councilman Hereford at any council meeting. They have asked for him to be censured due to making what many interpreted as a racial slur to Mr. Sykes. We cannot know what Mr. Councilman Hereford intentions were by making the statement. Is it because he's white? Was it because Mr. Sykes did not go along with the rest of the council unanimously to appoint Mr. McIntyre? And for the lack of being able to articulate himself, he threw out that statement. On the evening of February 5th, Mr. Sykes clearly stated to everyone on that night on why he could not support the appointment of Mr. McIntyre. He, Mr. Sykes, articulated if Mr. McIntyre were to be appointed, he would have to recuse himself from many of the decisions this council needs to make. I too believe that appointing a developer and a chairman of the Chamber of Commerce of Covina does not make sense to me either as a resident of West Covina. Where is his allegiance to? In the future, let other council members learn from this situation that it is important to articulate yourself so there is no confusion. I want to thank Mr. Arnold Glassman for stating in the article that my First Amendment rights as a residence are protected as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shirley, I think it says Leon.
Hi, I'm just a country kid. I've been out here forty-two years in West Covina. Good times, hard times, and empty times. Steve, didn't your momma teach you, hey, when you do wrong, say, "I'm sorry," and move on? We would like to hear that from you tonight, very much. Also, I live in West Covina, close to La Punti Civic Industry. We've got a lot of problem down there. Nobody wants to help us except for Frederick. I called Frederick 11:30 at night one night, saying, "Frederick, we got helicopters, we got police." I called the West Covina Police. They turned around and said, "Oh, we're not active." Who do I call? Call Civic Industry. We're not taking blame. I found out today, in our neighborhood, side by side, two homes have just been robbed. We got, I called my liquor kid, banana liquor kid, she's striking every day. Thanks for Frederick's help. I'm taking step by step. I called him, showed him the container. I contacted the school police, they're on patrol. Unfortunately, the kid was in front of my eyes tonight, today, and we were doing yard work, heavy yard work. He was out there drinking liquor, throwing his bottles, and making a mess. We got confetti, we call it modern art down here. We need policemen in our area to protect us and get us going in the right direction again. Thank you for your time, Ellen, Shirley.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, council, staff, excuse me, and everyone here tonight. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina for almost forty years. First, I would like to thank Mr. Bachmann for the good job he did for the city. He will be missed. I'm here tonight in disagreement with this council. We, the people of West Covina, should have a say on how our city is spending our money and making poor decisions. I think this council has forgotten, they work for us, we don't work for them. Number one, we are appealing the court's ruling on the medical center. There must be more to it than the residents know. Chances are, she can be suing the city since council did not uphold their agreement. The only people so far that have benefited from this is the attorney and the council. Number two, why are we putting a moratorium on the fifty-four lots where homes can be built? If there is a problem with parking, et cetera, like everything else, it can be worked out. Now that the housing market has gone up, it would bring more revenue to the city for permits plus putting people to work. How much revenue will this city be losing? There are projects approved and not completed. Example, Charles Company at the Heights was approved in 2006. Charles Company has another one, the Wicks Building. McIntyre Condos at 850 and 856 South Sunset since 2007. Council McIntyre stood right in front where I'm standing right now and fought with the residents. Variances were allowed overlooking the existing building, overlooking the existing building codes. Examples, ten-foot setbacks instead of twenty-foot setbacks. Building site to cover fifty-five percent, and you got sixty-four percent. You also got eight-foot separation between building when fourteen feet is required. This council must be fair with everyone, or more lawsuits are going to be filed. Was the dealership a redevelopment project? How much money this city has cost this city, and how much revenue has this city lost? On February On February two thousand and two, two, he said, the dealership owed West Covina thirteen million dollars. It started out as two hundred thousand. How much money are we going to get back from this project if redevelopment is involved? It's time for the council to start thinking about the city, not themselves. I'm glad the state of California took away the redevelopment money. It would only benefit the council and their friends. Council McIntyre has benefited you too. You went, you want apartment buildings cleaned up, but how many years did it take you to clean up the shopping center on Citrus? It was a pretty ugly sight. Trader Joe's did not move out for nothing. For things to get better, this council needs to listen to the residents, not the people who do not work, live, or work in this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Irene Fleck.
This is a difficult bunch of words to follow. You already know how I feel about the hill, as it's been called. And I, you've heard some really good comments tonight. I hope you really listened. Now I'm going to go on to something that I really want you to know about because it's also interesting. The library, of course, is doing some many, many fun things, and we have our spring book sale on Saturday, April twenty-seventh. But a thing I just found today, and I noticed you've got some flyers up there, we're having a book signing. It's Frank Girardo. He's the one that has written Name Dropper, and this concerns Clark Rockefeller, the prime, pardon me, I'm a little bit nervous about the, the hill. He's talking about Rockefeller, who's a prime suspect in the killing of the John Soho, Sohos, the body that they just recently dug up in his own home. He's going to be here at the library signing books and talking about this research that he's been doing and has put together. It's gonna be Saturday, May eleventh at four PM. And I, I would like you to put it on your calendar because I think it's going to be an extraordinary experience. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Vicky Shalaga.
Sorry. Sorry for the colors tonight. I can't wear the proper ones tonight. I, I am here for the West Covina Lions Club, so I have to fly their colors. We are here to, and I think there are a couple of us, although, oh yeah, there's still a couple more Lions here. We want to talk about our night on the town, which is scheduled for May twenty-second. Uh, it's going to be great. We have some terrific restaurants, including a, uh, brand-new bakery that is going to be a food vendor, as well as have several baskets in our silent auction. The food is gonna be great. We have free beer, free champagne, free sodas, free water, and we have the ABC contract that shows that we are going to be checking everybody's ID to make sure they are twenty-one, uh, to get any of our liquor on the premises. Gonna have a good band there. It's Impulse Band that has been with the summer concerts. Rudy Lopez is in charge of our, getting our band and, uh, putting out a lot of Facebook information. Uh, I hope you can attend. We are still looking for donations as well as sponsorships, and we should be selling tickets starting next week, hopefully. So if you need any tickets, the flyers I gave out to you, the Save the Dates, has my phone number on there, just let me know, and I will be over to, uh, sell you twenty, thirty tickets, uh, whichever you would like. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vicky. That does conclude our oral communications, and Vicky, I want to say, I, I was in San Juan, and I owe you a call, so I, I, I got a message you called, so I apologize for that. Okay, um, so this concludes our oral communications. We heard a lot of different things tonight, and I did write down a few things. I know one of them, uh, was asking in reference to a video equipment update. I don't know if, Chris, um, did you want to let him briefly just respond to that?
Yes, Chris, please prepare for that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, and to the general public. Uh, I did have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Hernandez prior to this, tonight's council meeting. Just give them an update and for the benefit of the rest of the public on the upgrades that we'll be making here in the council chambers to provide better quality of our webcasting of our city council meetings. We've been working with the technology folks, both at Mount SAC, who originally installed the system here, to provide new technology. We're in the process of ordering three brand-new cameras, uh, which will provide a high-definition feed of our council meetings. We're also, we're gonna be doing some rewiring of the council chambers, and most recently, we've actually done some construction, um, had to punch a couple walls here in the council chambers to make it more accessible. So the process has begun. We have a tentative date of June fourth, uh, I believe, that's the first council meeting in June, that we'd like to try and hope that the system is up and ready for. It will take a couple of weeks or a little bit longer, get all the rest of the equipment in and to install it. So there you go.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much. The next question, I guess there was some questions from residents, and maybe we can listen to the tapes. They said they wanted some items back in writing. Uh, Mr. City Manager, did you get that, get all those? Okay, fantastic. And, um, I don't know if any other council members want to speak, but I just briefly, you know, we have an agenda here we need to get through, but I want to just say, um, yes, Councilmember Sykes, I'll let you, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Seniston. Regarding Ms. Leon, I, I believe she may have departed, but, uh, it seems to me that she's, uh, begging for patrol checks. So if we can get back to her, contact her as to what time she's having these difficulties, uh, I think that'd be in order. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks for picking up on that. I appreciate that. I had a lot of scribble notes here, and I appreciate everybody coming forward tonight. And, you know, I just want to briefly say, I'm, I try and be a really positive person. I love life. Life is to be enjoyed, and I know that might not sit well with some people, but I do. I love life. I love my life. I love the city of West Covina. And when I sit here, I just truly believe my job is to keep decorum and conduct the meetings as a city business. This is a place that we do our business. And I believe in trying to be very professional. And so what I'd like to extend again, and I, and I try to mention this to the residents, that any personal issues that come up to this dais, I would be more than glad to meet with you personally. I think that that is a more appropriate place for it. I would never turn a resident down if they want to meet with me, with, talk with me. But anyways, just so you understand my style, we're all different. You know, each mayor that sits up here, each council member, we have our style of doing things, and, you know, mine is just to try and be positive and be productive and work together. And if I can ever do that for you, I will gladly do that. But again, I, you know, I just want to keep things, and keep our decorum and, and keep our business meetings flowing. We have a lot of business, a lot of very important items, and, you know, I know it's difficult, uh, to, to understand that, but that's where I'm coming from, and I care about every single resident in this community, because we all live here and we all enjoy this city, so I want to do whatever I can to, to make it a better place. So with that, I'd like to go on with the meeting unless Council, uh, Mayor Tim Herford.
Madam Mayor, let me respond to, uh, let me respond to some of the statements that were made tonight. First off, freedom of speech is, uh, what our country's founded on, and everybody has their right to, uh, to exhibit their freedom of speech. Many men and women have died so that people can come up here and say some of the things they said tonight. When I asked a question, it was a clarification. I totally misunderstood what Mr. Sykes said. I explained at the last meeting, it was a misunderstanding. We did talk, we, uh, explained each other what we, what was said to each other. It was a conversation between Mr. Sykes and I. I will apologize to my colleagues on the council for this being such a distraction, all of you. I, I never intended my question to be taken in that manner, uh, but it's interesting how a question like that can, can turn into a political issue. Every speaker that spoke up here tonight has spoken against me in the past on numerous issues. They took what was a question and, uh, turned it into, uh, acronyms such as slur, statement, things like that. It was a question to clarify an issue. When I was in first grade, my teacher taught me when I didn't understand something to ask a question. Sometimes questions are difficult, but, uh, sometimes we all hear things different. So, um, people have to understand that, uh, that if you, if you don't ask the question, then you don't know what the other person's thinking. And on the city council, that's critical, that we do ask questions. Some of them are tough questions, but anyway, um, I made a statement at the last meeting. I, I don't want the, uh, you know, issue to continue on. It's not good for the city, but, uh, I do apologize to my colleagues up here and Mr. Sykes if my question was inappropriate, or it was a misunderstanding, or whatever, but I do apologize for that.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Councilmember Satella.
I'd like to thank Mr. Herbert for clarifying the statement and apologizing to the residents and the council here. Hopefully we can move on, and, uh, we continue to do this.
Thank you very much. Councilmember McIntyre.
Yeah, um, I believe it was Elsie brought up a couple, uh, is it, is it Elsie? One was about, I, I don't really want to get up here and talk about me and my family, what we do all the time, but there was one question about, uh, or concern about the length of time it took to complete the new shopping center. Uh, we, we actually acquired that shopping center in two thousand and seven. We didn't have it before when it was a Trader Joe's, and, uh, it was actually the whole process of developing that shopping center, which really sparked my interest in wanting to get involved in the city because of the length of time and the amount of hoops you have to jump through. And I don't think anybody trying to improve a city like we eventually did should have to jump through so many hoops. So, um, I understand your frustrations about the length of time that projects take, and that's exactly why I stand up here and why personally I felt that I was a perfect person to represent the citizens, because I have a lot of experience with working directly with the city and, uh, know the frustrations that people go through when they're trying to just improve the city. I'm a citizen here. I want to make it better, and it was just crazy, some of the things we had to go through. Second thing was, um, the condos at eight fifty-six, that wasn't actually approved, so, uh, that's why nothing ever happened there, just for clarification. I believe you thought it was approved. And, uh, one other thing is about the, I believe, Mr. Warsaw brought up about the sale of the property over at the Civic Center here on the corner. You mentioned that the project wasn't going to generate enough to, uh, pay for a fire engine. Actually, that's exactly what it would have, I, before I was on this council, spoke as a private citizen that was in favor of it. The, the actual sale would purchase, I believe, uh, or really put a dent in it. It was gonna be a purchase price of, I believe, around seven hundred thousand, which would have bought a fire engine, which is exactly one of the main, you know, one, not the only reason, but a main reason why, again, I was in support of it, not to mention the property taxes and the business people coming here, eating lunch and everything. So, uh, just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to drop down now to our consent calendar. We have a lot of items on that. Is there anyone that needs to pull anything from the consent calendar? And if not, a motion is in order.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
A second. Did you have a, a comment in reference?
No, that was...
Your second. Okay, fantastic. Thank you. A motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, thank you so much. Um, and then we move down after our consent calendar. We have the item eighteen appeal hearings, which was held, uh, for the extension. Is that correct, Mr. City, uh, Manager?
Yes, that's been, that's been, um, continued, however...
I'm sorry, yes.
Do we need to take any action?
We're continuing item number eighteen.
Yeah, we just need to continue.
Okay, so let's move down to item number nineteen, which is a public hearing.
I think we need a motion to continue it.
Do we need a motion, Mr. City Attorney? Okay.
So moved.
I have a motion, a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries five-oh to, for item eighteen, which is the appeal of the hearing. Uh, the next item is public hearings, item number nineteen, which is for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, CDBG block grant action plan. Uh, City Clerk, will you please verify that proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, Hudson Verifying.
Thank you so much. And at this time, I shall open the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, CBG action plan. First, we'll have a presentation of our staff report, and then we, we shall hear comments from the public. Um, I can see over there Kelly is, uh, who's going to give our staff report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, this hearing concerns the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Because the city receives an annual grant of CDVG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the city is required to prepare an annual action plan which, uh, details how the grant funds will be spent. Now, this is the second of, um, two required public hearings. On March fifth, the City Council authorized staff to draft a thirteen, fourteen action plan that would be consistent with the approved two thousand and ten, two thousand and fifteen consolidated plan priorities and incorporate a continuation of current city programs, including code enforcement, capital projects, public services, and administration as described in the, uh, report. The draft action plan and approved consolidated plan priorities are included in this report as attachments number one and two respectively. Notice for this hearing was published on March thirteenth, and the draft plan was available for a thirty-day public review period as required by HUD. No comments were received during that time. Now, HUD has not announced final grant amounts. On March nineteenth, the city was advised to use the, the amount of the grant received in the current year less five point one percent due to the sequester, and use that amount as a planning number. With the additional program income, staff estimates the total amount of avail, available resources to be approximately eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. Based on this estimate, the proposed thirteen, fourteen action plan budget is detailed in the report. And once the grant amount is known, the proposed, uh, budget may be adjusted within administrative authority on a percentage basis to account for any difference. Significant changes would require a subsequent hearing to formally amend the plan. As the city's budget process moves forward, staff will work towards mitigating fiscal impact to the general fund. With that, staff recommends the City Council approve the proposed two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen CDBG action plan as detailed in attachment number one. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Is there any questions of councilmembers of staff? Seeing none, thank you so much. And we do not have any speaker cards unless then someone is present that would like to speak. We have no public comments, so I shall now close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask for any council discussion, or a more, uh, motion is in order. Discussion?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve.
A motion?
Excellent.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Um, Madam City Clerk, is that everything that you need for this evening? Okay, we're good then. Thank you so much, everyone. Our next item is, um, item twenty, which is the Planning Department. Did we need a motion to hold this as well, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, uh, entertain a motion to hold this item.
I'll make a motion, we hold this item.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. And at this time, we are, uh, Mayor and Councilmember reports. Do we have any AB one, two, three, four conference and meeting reports? Uh, seeing no one raising their hand or waving around, then that would, uh, move down to our City Council requests for reports, studies, or investigations. Councilmember Sykes?
I am, uh, a little embarrassed that we live in a state that is, um, seem to be light-years ahead of others, other states regarding, um, the internet and the technology around that. And the, um, municipal broadband that Chattanooga, Tennessee, has set up. I, I know that there are some costs and so forth, but, but I'm hoping that when the city gets turned around, that we can be in a position. So I'm, I'm, uh, hoping that, uh, our lead technical expert, Mr. Yatsi, he's, he's so quick every time I contact him, he's very quick with that media technology to get back to me. Uh, if we could just do a, a, a brief study on, on what it would take to bring broadband citywide to West Covina, and what obstacles we have to face. So there are laws that prohibit it, uh, and of course, I know that there is a cost, but, uh, this city was able to, uh, get a grant to get things started. So, uh, if, if we can get, uh, that checked into, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Any other council member comments, studies, investigations? Everybody is very quiet, so staff is breathing a sigh of relief, I'm sure, over there. So any city council member comments before we adjourn? Okay, um, again, everyone, thank you so much, and I welcome you to call if you have any concerns or questions. And we do have one adjournment, which I would like to turn the floor over to Councilmember Rob Satella.
I'd like to adjourn in, uh, the name of Anita Satella Butler. She passed away last week.
Our thoughts and prayers are with your family, Rob, um, and, um, we're here for you, any way that we can be, so...
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Uh, motion to adjourn? Do you have a, do you have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Aye? Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.